Hello, anybody there?
I guess what I said, Jim.
Okay, we're opening the hearing for 42 Maury Street variance. Owner is Thomas Reams, 42 Maury Street. Assesses map 15, lot 42. Nature of relief requested. Variance from Article Section 2.01. Dimensional requirements, which requires a minimum lot size, minimum setback to corner lot. He's requesting relief for the minimum size of the lot. Existing property is 40,464 square feet and is in an existing non-conforming condition. Also looking for relief for the side setback required of 50 feet for the T E H corner lot. The existing conditions are existing, non-conforming at 41 feet to the foundation and 37 feet to the deck. I'm looking for the addition to be located at 36 feet from the property line. Setback for the corner lot is 50 feet. Evidence to support grant of variance due to the location of the existing house and septic on the property is not able to build off the back of the house. The garage is detached and looking to connect with at least with the least impact to the site and existing house. Due to the house being built originally in a non-conforming nature with nine feet of the house within the setback already. Already zoning bylaws limit any additional work that can be done. Any improvement to the house would require said variance. You're Mr. Reams?
Yes.
Nice drawings anyways, I'll say that.
Thank you.
Some I've seen. What was additions to the Maury?
It's going to be in between the house and the garage, so pretty much the footprint of the existing deck. I'm going to extend it a foot further towards Sanders Circle, but go all the way up to the garage as well, connecting up for two stories.
Up to the garage?
Yes.
Really don't have a choice, can't make any more land and the lots are already pre-existing.
Yeah, I pulled the old deeds from the original when they were developing the property. So back in 1972 is when the original first eight plots along Maury Street were done. It did show a provision for Sanders Circle, which Lego was brought upon for the planning board in 1974. And that's when they added the additional lots in the back. But it always showed as 40,464 feet.
Anybody getting complaints?
No, I've talked to my neighbors. I have one that was left as a voicemail. I know Mark sent an email, I believe, today.
Yeah.
And I've talked to Frank and Kathy, all the other surrounding neighbors.
Single story addition?
It'd be a two-story addition.
Two-story?
Yep, so the addition that I have, I drew some plans on this for you as well. So I'm basically looking to do a new entry that's off the kitchen area and then doing a walkthrough, pass-through where the garage is, with a mudroom and then a couple steps up to a sunroom because the garage is at a different elevation than the house. And then on the second floor, I'd be taking the fourth bedroom, removing portion of the wall that would kind of connect into the new master bedroom than a master suite. So bathroom as well as bedroom. So it would maintain a four-bedroom house, but it would be going from a four-bedroom, one and a half, to a four-bed, two and a half bath.
Well, you've certainly outdone most of the people that come in here with a complete set of architectural and site plans.
Architectural, Zaidrew, and Civil Plans are one of the guys that I use on most of my projects. I'm a construction project manager, so I'm a... Do a lot of this work, mainly larger scale though.
Do you have anything?
No.
No, I don't. Hear a motion? So I turned that down because I hid it.
Before the vote goes, I do have one question. I might have missed this. On my addition portion, I do show another entry with a little vestibule on the front, like I did not account for the setback. So it's basically a little three-foot landing with a few steps going down. I did not include that in the setback. If that is an issue, I am willing to get rid of that. I just wanted to see if I could do a possible amendment during the meeting to add the additional setback from going from what I called 36 feet and it would probably be going down to 30 feet. That would just be for the front steps.
Yeah.
Entryway? Yeah, so if you turn to A1-2, you see a little platform with a couple steps coming down that's just left to the kitchen. Setback to the actual foundation wall and building, not to the front steps.
I don't see any problem with that, really. What do you want to do, enclose that?
It would be, it would have a roof on it. It won't actually be enclosed though. It would just be a couple columns with some deck material and a few steps down.
Thank you. Do you hear a motion? You asked if the audience have anything? I didn't see. Anybody in the audience have any, anything to say about this? My mistake, I should have asked earlier. Can make a motion to approve 42 Maury Street for the addition and the variance for the side set lot back, side lot setbacks. Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, done.
Thank you very much.
We have to wait a few minutes till the next hearing, which is at 7:20.
I realize we have to wait till the posted time, but I brought some.
Is it renewal? Expired, yeah. As I thought, we've not looked at this before. Was it new or a renewal?
Asking for the same thing.
Yeah, but did the other one, did the other one expire?
Yes.
Good ahead of the public hearing, a few granted as one in, I think, October 2018.
I can remember, because I'm asking if it expired or renewal. Yeah, yeah. Minutes seem like hours. Sing.
Cheesy hold music.
I can't believe you don't have Jeopardy theme song music ready.
The next hearing is on One Quissett Road variance, which is a resumetal of an expired variance that was approved originally back in October of when?
2018.
2018. Typically, the variances are required to be acted on within one year of the approval. If that, if nothing is done, substantially start the project during that timeframe, it expires, which is the reason they're now coming back to get re-approved. The owner is Eileen Dismaris and Richard Baldiga. The petitioner is Marco Loback. Property is Lot 1, Quissett Road, Mendon. Assesses map 22, Lot 212-1, and can be reviewed in the clerk's office. Nature of relief requested variance from Article Section 2, 2.01, which requires 200 feet of frontage. Relief requires the 200-foot frontage. The lot has 143.48 feet of frontage and the total area of the lot is 17.26 acres. It meets all other requirements other than the frontage. On anything?
I have nothing on it. I know the property, I've seen it. We'll buy it all the time.
May I speak? May I speak?
Not just yet.
I'll say.
Okay.
Do you have nothing further to say?
No, not right now.
Okay, now we'll open it up to the audience.
Yes, my name is Larry Pearson. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm a Millville resident, so I may not have any say here, but I did live on Quissett Road for 65 years and I'd like to just make a couple of comments here. That is a scenic road and as such needs a planning board permit to go through the wall. The wall has already been punched through. Granted, it was done by the previous applicant, but I would ask the board to remind this applicant that it does need a planning board approval before any, certainly any work should have been done prior to any further expansion on that wall. My other issue has to do with the wetlands at the immediate border of that. There's always been standing water there, as I can always recall. He's already going in there with construction equipment. Isn't that going to be a wetlands factor or a wetlands crossing? And again, I advise the board for the possibility of wetlands determination before substantial more work is done. And the final issue I have is what his intention is with this property. We have seen very recently that applicants to the ZBA and to the planning board open up backlands by using a common driveway, a single driveway, shared driveway, to then put three, two, three, four houses back there, which I personally feel is a circumvention of subdivision law. So I wanted to know if it could be validated how many houses if besides one, the applicant was going to consider building there. That's all I have to say.
Please do. For the record, my name is Eli Lano. I'm an attorney with Mayor Antonellis, Jakowitz, and Huronis in Milford. I'm joined tonight by the applicant Marco Lubak. And then, so just a little update on the property's equitable ownership. Mr. Baldiga passed away and Ms. Demaree has now closed on this property. So my client is both the owner and the applicant. I just wanted to update you on that. The goal here in speaking to the member of the public's questions somewhat in order is that obviously this board has jurisdiction over zoning matters and if there are matters related to Conservation Commission, will certainly go before whatever boards are necessary. I guess also planning board if that is also the case.
You have to go through site plan with the planning board anyways.
Mm-hmm. And we plan to. And then from the application that we've submitted to you, you can see that we've not asked for a shared driveway or any changes to the frontage regulations. I mean to multiple accesses off one frontage, which is in the bylaws of this town. The plan is for Marco and his wife, once their youngest child is getting ready to go off to school. The plan is to build her dream home, which is a secluded log home. So this will be one house on a large 17-acre lot, which, but for the lack of frontage, which goes to shape in soil shape and topography, this is the perfect lot for what they're trying to do. And this board has the option to grant the variance relief to allow them to, obviously in conjunction with other boards in this town with shared jurisdiction on other matters, go forward and work on building that dream retirement home.
The original application and decision back on October 4th, 2018, called for one, two to 3,000 square foot home. And so that has, that has not changed.
No, sir.
To answer the caller's question, questions about wetlands and, and other items that are beyond the scope of this board, the applicant still has to go through various other boards in order to get his final approval. So our decision is just basically allowing him to go to the next steps to build the house. Any other questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
We have a question. 145 Provenance Street in Mendon. The road is going to go behind it, is really close to our backyard.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Yeah, 145 Provenance Street in Mendon.
Yeah, yeah, on the corner.
So the road is going to go from, it's really close to our house, really close to the backyard.
A driveway, not a road.
Yeah, the driveway. It's really close to our backyard, very, very close. So we see the cars passing in our back.
It still required minimum distances.
Minimum 200 feet, but it's not.
No, I'm talking about as far as the driveway goes, there are minimum requirements that they have to meet to
Requirement.
To meet the sideline distances from your property. So it's not like they're going to be able to cross onto your property.
I have one more question. Is he planning on having a farm in his house?
Having what?
Farm.
Farm?
Yeah.
No, no, never said anything about farms, just a log home. There's a farm in the back over there, but no, no farm, no horse, it's not, just a log home.
Okay, so and also the concern is the water. Because where my backyard is, there is the water that coming all up the hill. So by disturbing the land, you want to make sure our basement won't get flood.
He'd have to go through conservation for that anyways.
Yeah.
That's conservation, that's not us. That'd be conservation.
So what's the next step to who we go?
If we pass, if we grant the variance, then he's got to go through conservation and the planning board for site plan review. And they deal with the water, we don't deal with drainage.
This is only one step.
This is the first step of other ones he's got to go through. Back to the question about farming.
Yeah.
Although it's not their intention to farm, I would suggest that your statement about that there would never be any farm animals should be deleted.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's, there's this is, this is horse country, Mendon.
We have right to farm community.
Right, yep.
Yes.
So please remove your
All right.
Statement that there will never be farm animals.
Who knows what happened 20 years down the road, 30 years? You never know.
While I was buying that, somebody went in our lot and cut a whole bunch of trees. Is this something that is resolved here or no?
No.
Not here.
They have to go.
Yeah, I don't know if it was our neighbor or, but you know, they cut a lot of trees there and just left them.
I'd like to think it was a mistake on their part. I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know who we go to.
I have to go check.
Hi, mate. Yeah, mate. On the line. My name is Bob Hoyman. I'll be the neighbor on the other side. So yeah, I just wanted to verify that it was a Bob Hoyman. I live at 5 Quissett.
Okay.
So I just wanted to verify that it indeed was a single, a single So I just wanted to verify that it indeed was a single, a single dwelling. Is there anything that assures us of no, you know, sub, subdividing in the, in the, in the future? I don't guess there's any guarantees, but.
Wouldn't they need to go before us to, to do that again if they even intended?
Yeah, if they years down the road, they'd have to go through this whole thing again.
Okay, yeah. So I'm, I'm fine. I just wanted to verify it was a single, a single dwelling. No shared driveway thing. Okay, thank you.
Grant this will be a single family home. What happens 20 years down the road? Who knows?
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Again, uh, anybody asking any questions or wants to make any statements, you need to identify your, yourself and your location. Any other questions? Any more motions, John?
What's the address of that again?
One Quissette.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to grant the variance for 1 Quissette Road for the lack of frontage, missing by about 60 feet, I believe it is, on 17-acre lot. It has been granted once before and just to renew. Same variance.
Circuit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Thank you. I'm actually also representing the next applicant at 7:45.
You have another one?
Continuation, right? Now we wait.
You don't have any paperwork on this other one, right? For 179 Blackstone?
Yeah, we continue.
Yes.
Yeah, me too. Still kept the beard though, I was liking it too much.
This is my copy, if you wanna look at it.
I just give it a quick look, yeah. Refresh my mind, I'm old.
My, uh, fiance was liking the long hair a little bit, but
I still haven't.
My fiance was liking the long hair a bit, yeah, but you know, have to
Well, this isn't this one.
Enough is enough at some point. Yeah, me too. Uh, you know, the other thing is it's hot. You know, I haven't had long hair like that since high school, so.
How you doing, John?
John, how are you?
Good.
Just telling Tom I probably got the haircut.
Oh, this is Keith Usher, it's all right. Yeah, all right.
He was looking at her.
Now I know. I just had to get
I have my folder from last time, I don't know if it's, what, what's in here, but
I do in the truck.
No, in the truck, okay, so you guys are good. Do you need a refresher?
I'm good, thank you.
I know what it is.
That's great, thanks for the update on Emily. That's good, I'll, I'll have to tell Lauren.
Yeah, I know, I was, um, I always like to hear all the things that she went to school with.
It's a good group, very driven, um
It's a very brave class.
Smart, oh yeah. I mean, it's really, um, I mean, you know, it's, it's ironic being in the industry. My, my daughters will meet people, former colleagues of mine and stuff, and I'll get a text or a call, they'll say, "Hey man, I met a girl today with the same last name as you, any relation?" And I go, "Oh yeah." And, and they almost always say, "Super, super nice, very professional."
Definitely.
Because I mean, a lot of the, you know, you get a mixed bag in any industry, right? You know, in terms of
You could have this seat.
Attitude or, or
You can have this seat.
Intelligence or what have you. And so, um, you know, the first thing they want to say is, "Super nice."
Good luck.
Which is really refreshing.
I hate those meetings.
Married it.
Right now you can have this job, I've been so busy, it's unbelievable.
You are?
Yeah. Last week I had 56 hours, I get 50 hours this weekend, it's only Thursday.
That's good though.
Only when you're 76 years old. Already retired. Yeah. I can't sit home all day.
No.
Yeah. Safes. Been everywhere, I've been to northern Maine.
Glad I got a couple of years ago.
Just doing a lot of small stuff. We're running out, we're not gonna get another delivery.
Mostly inspections and some consulting work.
Yeah.
So big yesterday, 2,800 pounds.
Well, really hasn't affected me as much as other people because again, I dropped way back.
Just a little smaller than you like, but my
Worked out.
Four miles.
Again, once.
Really. Not interior stuff.
Hasn't affected
Put in a kitchen.
Something where too much inspections, I do a lot of
I did one today, I did a package inspection.
Good.
I did one at Paxton today.
Did the big new plan set get here?
Bulkhead. Bulkhead had a twist in it. It's like, it's straight and twisted.
I don't wanna people see people
All the way. I can't, sometimes I do. Today is on the wind.
Oh, yeah.
He's supposed to be here.
Use a truck, you have to slide down a bit.
I, I asked Bill at Land Planning to make sure you had them, and I asked if they wanted me to pick them up, because I'd like the guys to be able to look at them.
Once the, get over time, once you tip it over, it's downhill. You think you're gonna hold it?
I don't know which one that is.
Some people think it was.
Okay, I had, I had that too, but I guess I should have
Try to hold the tonnyback going downhill?
Because I thought I asked how many copies you wanted.
It doesn't work, no. You gotta have a winch.
Or a wall.
Yeah.
One step or metal step.
Yeah, once you tip that over, it's gone.
After all of that, not send you the PDA. This is going great.
Little wind, the little
Little wind, yeah.
I just let go.
You have to let go, it'll take you with you.
Rip your arm right off.
A lot of these younger guys, they don't have figuring. They don't measure the diagonal measurements of the safe. When you get downstairs, you gotta stand it up. You gotta have the diagonal measurement to miss the ceiling.
The arc.
The arc, you know, yeah. Gotta have that arc there. Some, they don't. Yeah, then they won't stand up.
So
They gotta measure, make sure you get that
I don't mean to be known
No, 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 no.
We had that trouble in Barrington.
Because it's a story.
Every three-quarter plywood. Just miss by a quarter.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Mary inherited your mother's house.
Yeah, yeah.
Good business for you to buy. You know, this whole business.
Brother
He's 72, right?
Sister, I was doing a lot of legal Haven't been resolved, the lawyer that we
But he would have.
Just changed lawyers within the last month. Just simply because Original attorney not to marry any
Just that helps the problem.
In fact, I, I felt that he was
Always a problem.
Sort of sabotaging the effort.
Delivery helps, you know.
Anyhow
We leave at 5:00 in the morning. They want to be back by noon or whatever. Nobody wants to work more than eight hours.
Oh, yeah. Had a lot of issues.
It doesn't bother me, but the young guys will come in. I mean, I gotta be here by 4:00, 4:06. We had a couple of young guys. We're going
Lawn and shrubbery and
You wanna be up beyond 4:95 before 7 o'clock, or you're stuck in the truck. Yeah, you know, so you leave early, so you get back there. Okay. Leave early.
Actually, thank you.
Yeah, I'll be here at 6:00. 6:30, we're sitting in the truck.
The house.
Yeah, but then you can't do the jobs now. Yeah.
Needs a long drive.
I can't get there that early. They always got a story.
Police won't do anything unless Mary's there.
The baby was sick last night. What needed
And something like that's going on. The police, they were totally different at the end.
I can see somebody have an emergency. Yeah, every week there's something. I take the baby to the emergency. I gotta get back to All the guys that run with their I can My wife says, "Where are you going today?"
I'm going to work and I'm on the
Like today, she says to me, "You working today?" I said, "I'm supposed to get on there." Somehow, somebody tried to break it straight. Say, "Sure." So I had to get on there and I got a little shorty.
All set, thank you.
Taking care of.
Yep, I got him.
We needed to fix it. Safe to prep, then I had to go to Paxton and help them put down the salaries. No, no. I was just rocking, doing, doing. I'll go prepping the stakes for them. I could get them ready, like, I could leave in the morning.
I, I had to, I had to get up.
I was
I had to go watch them drive. I got a wall. And then I fell asleep, and that's why I was late.
Gonna happen, it is.
People, I'm so sick of people.
Gonna be somebody going in there.
You gotta have that drive in, yeah. People don't nowadays.
Gotta be worried. Maybe I don't have to drive, I'm just old. Growing up on a farm and you always did this You have to do whatever you have to do.
Intimidate.
That's how I feel, though.
My wife was complaining yesterday. We tied you with, every day for the last three weeks. Seven days. So today I had to go to Paxton. 3:30 when they called, they're gonna be there.
Yeah.
So I stopped, "Do you want to take a ride to Paxton? See how we do this?"
Some, some people
No, she said, "Yeah, I'd love to take a ride." So she went.
Oh, she went with her? But she saw you, like, you gotta go.
Yeah, yeah.
So she went with it.
She just wanted to get out of the house. I mean, she has things to do, she gets out of here. I said, "Don't think this is gonna be a habit." Don't think this is gonna be a habit. I had to go by the house anyways.
Two minutes, right? Yeah.
Keith Usher.
Banging on the back of
Common Drive.
Heads, you know.
Same one we had last week in the
Yeah, yeah.
The drawing. I had the best plan, yeah. We're having locations.
One, two, three.
This is existing.
That's it, that's his house.
Yeah, it's existing, existing. What? Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's like they say, there's nothing like
Not taking court, only Bella.
Mary's godmother from 475.
75 feet, more or less, plus or minus. 75 feet from the bond. It shows your building 75 feet from your bond line.
Okay, and what's this building gonna be from that point?
Proposed dwelling. It's a proposed dwelling. We wouldn't have that measurement. When they go up the site plan, we could have them put over here. That's gonna be Planning Board. It has to conform to our site law setbacks. But we don't do that here, we can only grant the He goes up building these houses.
I would say my well is right about there. That, that's obvious to my concern. I mean, what do you want to do with this?
Yeah. Actually, solid words, if we should grant it, I'm not saying we are. It's just a driveway, not the house. I just asked for proposed locations in neighbors' houses last week. Too exposed. Because I wanna make sure that your house isn't way over here near the line. Going forward.
The thing he said last hearing sort of relevant on this one, and I'll pull on him.
Is that it?
Yeah, it does exist.
So that's his, right?
This is existing, yeah.
So, so this is all his?
Yes.
This is his?
Yes.
Okay, so this is one.
Block one, yeah.
Two is his already.
No.
If that's existing, it has to be his.
Are we gonna open up the hearing?
Because he's the only one that lives there. I just find it a little confusing.
His wife lives there?
Yeah.
I know her name, it's
That's that one. I won't bother you.
Opening up the hearing for 179 Blackstone Street. Continuation of the prior hearing, which we asked the applicant for some additional information on his, on his drawings showing existing, uh, neighbors and other information. Uh, he's provided a, a, a drawing from Land Planning, Inc., civil engineers, to, uh, show some of the questionable, uh, items that we had. The original request was a variance from Article 2, Section 201A and B, which requires frontage for a residential, single-family lot to be a minimum of 200 feet, and driveways to be wholly within the lot being serviced. The petitioner proposes to divide the property into four lots. The petitioner requests a variance on frontage on Lot 3 from 200 feet down to 94 feet. The petitioner requests the lot, requests the, the four lots be assessed from a shared driveway lo- lot, yeah, a shared driveway located on Lot 4, located at 179 Blackstone Street. Assesses map 26, 108, 179, which can be reviewed at the clerk's office. Petitioner is Keith Usher, 179 Blackstone Street. And he is being represented by the law firm. And you are Eli?
I am, yes.
Eli Leno. Nature of relief requested. Loaning bylaws require the 200-feet frontage, the driveways to be wholly within the lot being serviced, access to be contained within the frontage. The applicant is proposing to divide the property into four lots, three of which will be, three of which will meet all bylaw dimensional requirements. Lot 3 on the attached proposed plan lacks 200 feet of frontage and therefore requires dimensional relief. Furthermore, applicant requests relief from the shared driveway provision of Section 201B. This would be to avoid further land and wet area disturbance by augmenting the access driveway currently serving the existing house. In order to support grant of variance, this property could be subdivided under the Mendon subdivision rules. However, this request for variance would allow applicant to minimize further disturbance to the lowest, wettest points on the property closest to Blackstone Street. A shared private driveway, as proposed, will reduce cuts and fill and will not be as disruptive as installing a cul-de-sac instructed to public roadway standards. The shape of the lot allows for sufficient frontage under the zoning bylaw under the zoning bylaw for three conforming lots. It requires relief for a fourth. Each proposed lot has upland greater than the minimum required total lot area. A relief is needed for access. The hardship. This is a large property with significant dry upland. But access to the property approaches Hopbrook. Thus creating soil conditions dissimilar to those in the rural residential district at large. Allowing all four lots access from one point on Blackstone Street will alleviate any potential traffic concerns on the public way will similarly mitigate wet soil concerns.
There, I guess.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for briefing us on the application. As you can see from the plan, which I, per the board's request last time, I think has been greatly improved and now shows the abutting properties and existing dwellings. On my client, Keith Usher, who's joining us here tonight as well. Presently, Mr. Usher lives on Lot two and also has an outbuilding. And then on Lot one, his mother resides in that residence. So there is already a driveway up, providing access to lots one and two. The plan would be to divide so that lots three and four, he has children. And the plan would be to have this back acreage be accessible and then have a possibility that his children could also live up in the area as well. So, in terms of the things that you read about where variance relief is needed, it would be for Lot three, the frontage is ninety-four and the width is taken at the setback line, which makes sense on a more standard-sized rectangular parcel or a much smaller one-acre, I guess, sixty thousand square foot lot. So one and a half acres roughly. But here, the width being ninety-three, if you, you see that there's certainly much wider spaces. So it's not a question of being able to site a house within the setback requirements. It's just the unusual shape creates a bit of a hassle. And again, Hopbrook is here. We would prefer not to change the way the water comes down the hill. Potentially, there's complications from that that might involve conservation. But as of now, if we go up the existing driveway, there's not. So it's a possibility to leave a bunch of trees that are already existing. And I'm sure that you've driven down this part of Blackstone Street, but you barely can tell that there are houses up the hill there. And that would be the continuation here with these two more houses. Traffic on Blackstone Street would change in a de minimis manner from these additions. I think pedestrian safety is sort of a limited point in this area. It's not exactly a well-walked road. And then, we had talked last meeting briefly with Mr. Tierney, the abutter in the back. And the goal would be to reduce any excessive removal of trees so that all these people who have existing houses on Chapin won't have to interact with seeing the new houses and won't have any reduction in privacy or anything else there. And our goal in developing the plan this way would also be, these are clearly retreat lots out back. The plan is to keep them secluded and private to the benefit of both my client and then the neighbors at large.
Would the other two driveways disappear? Or would you keep the other driveways? Lots one and two, existing driveways now?
Yes, so currently it goes up. What we'd have to do is extend. So they, the, under this plan, the existing driveway would stay and it would just be augmented to reach lots three and four.
So is the existing driveway the one that, you know, is the circle right there?
Right, yeah. So it's the little, the lollipop cul-de-sac there is existing.
This is the existing driveway already.
For about fifty percent of the length of the shown driveway, it is already what the service conditions are.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, it's a spot where when you're driving the road, it's forest and thick and you can't see up to the two existing residences.
Know exactly where you are.
So we want to keep that as best we can to the benefit of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is this little dark line here is?
This is his driveway right now. He wants to add on here. This is already here.
So currently, as this plan exists, you'll have to make one crossing of the wetlands?
Yes, to get back to Lot four, there's a proposed wetlands crossing.
And you're saying that if this was not granted, that you would look into a subdivision?
Again, our goal is to do it this way because I think it's both better for my client not to have to redevelop a driveway that already exists. And I think it's a benefit to the town as well that this is a street and, or not a street, an access in private ownership, meaning that we're responsible for plowing and road maintenance. Whereas if we did a, went through planning board and did a full subdivision to get the same amount of lots, that's a street that could potentially be turned over onto the tax roll. There's certainly sufficient area and the ability to develop this in a different manner.
This is already a common drive.
Correct, to two, two residents.
Two residents, correct.
And sufficient areas for the relationships of the well and septics?
Yeah, everything is perked and it'll all work. There's sufficient upland back there and minimal, other than obviously what we've discussed, access to Lot four. We'll have some discussion with conservation to make sure we do that to code and to to all the regulations of both the town and the state. But otherwise, there's sufficient upland. It's good land back there, as evidenced by the two existing homes and also the Chapin Court area back there. Those lots are in a similar elevation.
So again, just reiterating, this would be step one. You'd have to go down there. That's what you're saying, correct?
Yeah, we'll need to make sure that it meets the conservation requirements.
Planning and conservation across the wetlands.
How far is, is there any houses on the Carlson? Milo? Adjacent, your proposed Lot four house?
I believe that's woodland.
Pardon?
Woodlands. So I think we've shown to the best of our ability all the houses that were reasonably proximate to this lot. Because we have nineteen-plus acres.
Got any questions?
I think I'm good.
Sure.
Not now.
No, we're good. I just wanted to.
Excuse me. I'm not done yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah, I don't have any more questions.
I will now open the hearing to the general public. Anybody has any questions? You must stand up, identify yourself and your, your location.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Tierney. I'm at three Chapin Court. And can everybody hear you?
Are you?
Three Chapin Court, Tom Tierney.
Okay.
And we gave a letter to Mr. Usher last time we all got together. I want to drop one off for you folks. Basically, our main concern is making sure that Mr. Usher's property maintains its privacy and our properties maintain its privacy. We want to keep a hundred feet of vegetative matter between our respective houses so that, so we don't look at each other's back porches, you know? Also, I want to make sure that my well, it might be easier to point it out. Right about here. So it's going to be awfully close to this property. So I want to make sure that, you know, if there's a, if there's a septic, it's gonna be.
That'll be handled by the, by the board health.
That's board health.
Mr. Tierney?
So right now.
Out on mine as well, just so that we can have reference or record of it. So here's yours.
Okay, so this is my house. So right about here is my well.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So we had our, we had an expert come over and tell us about property values and such. So long as there's a vegetative barrier between the houses, you know, Keith should be able to do what he wants to do and we should be able to do what we want to do. We just don't want to have, you know, the trees cut down further and now we're looking at each other's houses. That's, one of the reasons I moved to Menden was because of the the beauty of the, of the spot, you know?
Well, right now, according to this, there's seventy-five feet to, from the corner of your dwelling to the property line.
Correct.
It doesn't say how many feet from the proposed dwelling to your property, to the, to the property line.
So, the setback requirement in this zone is twenty feet in the rear. So it's at least twenty feet because everything will meet the setback requirements. Again, I'm not an engineer and I don't want to speak to the engineers.
Scale-wise, scale-wise, this would be a lot more than shut, you know?
So there's another twenty feet. So we're at least ninety-five feet. And then there's clearly more than that. And our goal remains, and we spoke with Mr. Tierney after the last meeting, and I'd say read him loud and clear on the fact that his, his property is nice and wooded and secluded and we have an awful lot of woods. And the goal is to maintain. So happy, happy good neighbors. A long way away from each other with no shared access to each other unless you drive all the way around anyway.
Can I have Mr. Usher
Yeah.
Just verify that?
Yeah, no, our goal is long-term. This is a family parcel that my children eventually, that are ten and eleven years old, would maybe potentially be moving into any one of these four dwellers. We're not looking to divide this. At a neighborhood, it's more for our own personal use. And we're ten years plus down the road is what we're looking at currently. And we certainly do not want to disturb any of the privacy that we all have now and enjoy. Because we enjoy, that's why we live where we live right now, right?
No, exactly.
So I think we're all on the same page as far as that goes. And I think once we found out that we are looking long-term family owned, I think that we all understood our long-term goals and I think it kind of works.
Anybody else in the audience have any questions?
I just want to leave. If the trees were cut down, there would be a detriment to lots of Chapin three and, and five, right? That would detriment, be a detriment to our property values if there wasn't a vegetative barrier. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that. I don't want to take a hit on this and I'm sure Keith doesn't want to either, so.
So how many feet are we looking at as, as staying vegetated?
Well, the.
Maybe Keith.
I was gonna say there's probably thirty feet currently between your back lawn.
Yeah.
Fifteen, twenty feet to the property line and then another ten or fifteen feet. So I would say there's probably thirty feet currently of vegetation between his clearing and our clearing.
It's probably more than that, but.
But I didn't go out there and measure it and certainly didn't do a delineation of this. Like I said, we're long-term, we're not looking to do it.
I think.
And I.
Put that to bed. How about picking a, some footage tonight?
I would want to call fifteen feet on each side only because, I mean, their house is existing. I do have wetlands in the front of this proposed dwelling and some setback requirements that we can't deal with today because we have conflict.
Yeah.
In our future. So, but thirty feet of vegetation, when the two outside edges get sunshine, we all kind of know how that starts to develop. We don't see with some light currents and.
So, so if each had fifteen feet, is that what we're saying?
No, I think it's, you know, in six months out of the year, I can't see his backyard at all. But six months from the time fall starts until spring comes along, I can look right into the backyard. So that's what we want to make sure of, is that if we're going to, whatever's there, we don't want to cut down. And if you're building up new houses, I planted a couple of evergreens in my backyard just to, again, try and give us a barrier between the two properties. And I think that's what we want to maintain.
What I was trying to develop is, is there some dimension that we can choose tonight as a minimum requirement of vegetation that will remain on both properties? If that's not possible to determine tonight, then so be it.
Yeah, no, I would think that we'd have to measure it. I wasn't gonna, you know, take a tape measure and start walking through the woods to see what's already there. You know, because it's not on my property, so.
Do you think fifteen minimum on our side, at least as proposed by my client, is a good faith start? And it's not something where we're going to measure fifteen feet off the lot line and cut all the trees that are at fifteen feet, five inches or something, so.
Well, I would actually feel more comfortable with whatever's there stays there. You know, as opposed to, you know, if you say fifteen feet, you go to the property line, you could cut down an awful lot of trees.
But that's a.
Well, we don't know if that's possible because they.
Right. No, I think we probably have to take some measurements, so.
All right, so we're not going to be able to plug, if there's a, whatever decision is made tonight, we're not going to be able to plug in a minimum.
We're trying to do this to help you, so.
No, exactly, exactly. It's, and I don't want to, you know, it sounds like Keith's in a long-term situation here. So I don't think we're, it's vital that we get a footage amount right now, but.
Okay, fine.
But it's, you know, just so long as we all understand that the idea is to make privacy.
That could come under site plan review.
I was gonna say, that would probably be.
That's under site plan review anyways with the planning board. Wouldn't be us to do that.
No, I just want to make sure that we put that out there. I don't want Keith to get halfway through this thing and then find out.
Grant the driveway and then when he goes to build the house, he's gonna go to a site plan review with the planning board.
The tree probably would be part of that, I imagine.
They'll come up at site plan review.
All right. If you don't mind, Keith, I'll take a tape measure and see what we got in the backyard.
I agree that tonight's hearing probably isn't affecting.
That's not gonna affect it one way or the other, because.
That will come up, but I mean, as much as I like my attorney, he's not here to nothing. And so, I mean, every time he comes up, I know it's unfortunate. I know he doesn't want to judge, but he does.
I was just trying to potentially eliminate future, a future problem.
And that's why I.
That can't be done. So be it.
Because we've done a site plan review before where situations like this, when they're much closer. And we've had them plant abrevieties or fans or whatever. When they go to build a house. And that's a bridge to cross down the road.
And we do have a good start.
Yeah, I'm, well, planning board would be at least a year away before we go. But we decide to later on is still, my plan currently is long-term. Like I said, I explained that to you and my family. If we do get some approval here, then we're gonna go through some delineation of wetlands and some other planning board review and things like that. And at that point, we'll be able to talk about any kind of offsets and.
Okay, any further questions? Yes, sir.
Martin Latrell, five Chapin Court.
I'm sorry, what?
Martin Latrell, five Chapin Court. I'm just wondering, how, how common is this type of variance in a town of Menden for shared driveways?
Pretty common.
What do you generally base your decisions on?
Man can be developed, you know, they're better off with two nice houses than ten or twelve block houses, you know?
Aesthetics, environmental.
Aesthetics, you know, and, you know, I'd rather have one house on four acres than three houses on four acres, or two houses.
Okay. Okay. Are there plans tonight that could be viewed by the public, people here this evening?
Sure. These plans here?
Yes.
Do you have an extra set?
I don't, but Sarah, if you want to...
Look at these.
When you're concluding or something, so we could come up and just take a look?
So I've been taking notes. I drew Mr. Tierney's well on here and I wrote your first name on your parcel.
Ellen, that plan you have...
Want to spell the last name?
Well, I have it.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yep, I have the abutters shown here. So your, your house is 95 feet from the lot line.
Yep.
And then the proposed dwelling is quite remote from your house, but...
Yes.
Obviously, you, you deserve the right to take a look at the plans.
You can, you can actually have, take that plan with you.
Thank you. And one last question. The issue that was just discussed regarding the vegetative buffer, if you were to grant approval for this, could enforcement of that agreement be part of that, or is that something outside the purview of this?
Went out the window when they couldn't decide how many feet they wanted to save, so...
That'd be up to the planning board then, because it comes under site plan review. When they go to get a building permit, it's got to go to site plan review.
Okay. And what about hours of construction?
The what?
Hours of construction.
That's a plan, that'd be...
Okay.
I think it's building department.
Basically, if they want to start building, they have to go through a separate process at the, the planning board. This is just, you know, giving them...
They have to go through a planning board and conservation before they even thought about getting a building permit.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just approval for the frontage and the driveway continuation. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
May I? I'm Sharon Latrell. I'm at five Chapin Court. And I, I do have a couple of questions, and I'm wondering if it's appropriate to ask them tonight.
Sure.
I am curious about the timeline. You mentioned that it's in the future, but if you could get a little more specific about that. I'm curious about why you're approaching the ZBA tonight, if this is something 10 years in the future.
So...
I could speak to it or you could speak to it.
I think...
But I mean, if in the next year or two, we don't procure some kind of approval for this, we might just find a new place to live, have an expansion for our family. This, this, the only reason we're trying to do this is for the future of our people and our children. So we figured now is the time, the opportunity for us, while we're thinking of it currently, with our kids being in the middle school here in Mendon, to kind of take, you know, take into consideration, do we stay here this long or do we look to go somewhere else and stuff? So that's the only reason we're trying to look for it now. Obviously, 12, 13-year-old kids are going to be living independently, and we have a tremendous investment already in the privacy of our home before you were there. And we built this place because we want to be private, and we understand what you guys want, because that's why we're there. And we have it there since 1997, so...
I think that it was since 1999, just to point out that we...
I was there in 1997.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just want to set the record.
So I bought the land in 1991, I bought it. So I have the land and I had these dreams as a young, young guy. And so I've been there a long time, and I understand you guys are there, your land is your land, and I respect you for that. But you ask me why I'm here now, is so I can make my long-term decisions for my family.
Right, which makes sense. Are we, me?
No.
Oh, okay. Are you able to answer the question about the building timeline? Like, is that something that, would you want the houses to be constructed at a point before your children are ready to move into the home?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that before my children. That's not my idea or plan today, absolutely not. And I did have a private conversation with Tom.
I didn't share that with you.
Okay, and that's fine. But my plan is certainly not to have any traffic coming in and by my current dwelling right now. It's a long-term plan, when my kids maybe do leave, and I don't know if you guys have already gone through it, but when I do have that situation, whether my kids move into my house and I move back to a smaller dwelling and downsize, that is my long-term goal.
Thank you.
Just to briefly add to that, obviously, his is the heartfelt homeowner's position and I'm the lawyer here. So the part of why we do this in the order we're doing it is because we can't go to the planning board to have the division done without the variance relief, which this board has the purview for. So we have a very specific order of operations, and it's a situation where, you know, conservation might take multiple years with certain things. You never know, they run into things like vernal pools and you have to see multiple seasons of fill and exit. There's all sorts of different things, so the idea that 10 years out in development kind of comes fairly quickly. So we're just trying to get the ball rolling here so that it's not a mad dash in any way, so that when a board like yours asks for a better plan, we have no issue continuing, bringing you a better plan. We're trying to do it on a relaxed timeframe to do just the best possible job we can, bringing as much information to each of the relevant boards and to the abutters as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just a question for clarification. How long does Mr. Usher have to act upon this variance if it passed tonight before it needs to be renewed?
How long it gets recorded in the, in court?
So after that, we would have to bring it to the planning board to have the ANR plan approved to actually split the lots. And once we've done that, until a homeowner sells off the separate lots, they're not at risk of merger, especially because I don't think these zones are going to change.
Gotcha.
And we certainly have a huge amount of area based on what's actually required. The smallest lot that we're proposing is more than twice as large as is required in this zone, so we're not at risk of merger.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions from anybody? Your motion?
Can make a motion to grant the variance for 179 in Blackstone Street to take one lot and divide into four lots and one non-conforming frontage lot. All the other lots will conform, and they all have 60,000 square feet of better upland.
You're...
Hi.
Hi. Done.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate your time tonight.
Now, this, the decision will need to be recorded.
Mm-hmm.
The deeds.
And I, I can't remember. In Mendon, do you want me to do the first draft of the decision, or...
That would be helpful if you would...
Absolutely. You start it. So Ellen, I'll reach out to you tomorrow to have a draft decision of one of your recent similar ones, and I'll work off of that so that we don't shock the system. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good.
I'll thank her. Just concerned. Any comments? Yeah, yeah, we're going to get going.
45, I don't see why they, attorney could write it. Joe Antonelli, Joe is the attorney, I mean, he does them all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, do it for us.
All right. I go last meeting and one approval.
Right. Your parole joke would send you a draft, I think.
Okay.
So, Jesse Lonnie.
You haven't done anything, I know.
No, I didn't. I just assumed somebody was going to give them to me.
Right, okay. If you could get me the, the notes from those two hearings, I'll start the process for you and get you.
All right, so I'm supposed to write these?
Pardon?
I'm supposed to write the decisions?
Well, I'm going to, I'll write the decision for you this time.
Well, I have.
Well, in the, in the other two cases, we didn't have an attorney.
Yes, we did.
Oh, Anton Ellis was there.
Anton Ellis.
Oh, wait, you got...
Joe was the Anton.
The denial.
No, the other one too. He was, he was Tenio's attorney, wasn't he?
No, Nero.
Joe's, Joe's a denial.
Oh, Joe, yeah, that was denied.
No.
Who was, who was Tenio's?
We're not going to ask him to write his own denial.
Was it Nero?
Tenio's was...
Well, he'd write it too.
It might have been the same firm.
It was the same firm, yeah.
Different lawyer.
So anyhow, you get me the, the minutes of the meetings.
Gotcha. I'm working on those.
And there's, we have a, there's a timeframe on that, so...
Actually, I think I've got it.
I get spoiled because when Sherry was, was the secretary, we sort of worked together and she was able to develop her own technique to, to draft, review them, to make any comments or corrections, and off we went. She was, took a big load off of my head.
I see.
Which I'd like to...
Put right on my head.
Because the planning board...
I had no idea I was the decision writer.
The planning board, we had the attorney who always wrote the decision.
Right, so usually for approvals.
Yeah, write the decision, we review it.
All right.
They have a form written in the computer, I'm sure they just printed or changed the names.
If you just let me know when I can pick this, those up.
The minutes? I'll email them to you. I'll email them to you.
Okay.
Have you got minutes to approve?
I do not. And there was no correspondence to the board.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.